Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Manasha Common Council meeting to order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we have roll call, please?
Alderman Collier.
Here.
Alderman Keenan.
Here.
Alderman Zalinski.
Here.
Alderman Spencer.
Here.
Alderman Benner.
Here.
Alderman Nichols.
Here.
Alderman Taylor. Alderman Carl Kramer has been excused.
The first item on the agenda this evening is a public hearing. There are actually two public hearings, and they are regarding special assessments. The first is the proposed resolution authorizing public improvements and levying special assessments against benefiting properties for the second addition to the Woodland Hills subdivision. And the second is the proposed resolution authorizing public improvements and leveling, levy special assessments for 1189, 1205, 1212, 1228, 1237, 1253, 1269, and 1285, Province Terrace -- it should be Province Terrace, and 1251 and 1269, Oneida Street. And I think I forgot to mention to Tim, who is sitting in for our Public Works Director, we usually have the Public Works Director just explain what this is all about. If you could do that for us, Mr. Mentor.
Second addition to Woodland Hills, basically a new subdivision. The utilities were put in, sanitary sewer, storm sewer, water main. The new gravel, gravel street, electricity that was put in, in the, in the new subdivision. Basically, it's, it's done. There are houses being built out in the area. So that's a new development. The Hulsebeck area, the, on Province Terrace and on Oneida Street, that was a development that was, the, the infrastructure was put in in 2005. There was a, a deferred assessment policy for, for 10 years before the assessments would come due, and it's been 10 years. So basically, that development or the pavement, the, the storm sewer, the electricity, the trail, that's been in for 10 years now. And it's just a, a new development area that's, there's a, a number of office, or at least one office in the Hulsebeck area that is, is existing now.
So with that, we'll open the public hearing for the proposed resolution for the Woodland Hills subdivision. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on that public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll call that public hearing to a close, and we'll open the public hearing for the proposed resolution for the Province Terrace and the Oneida Street area. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on that public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll call that public hearing to a close. Item E is public comments on any matter of concern to the city. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on any matter of concern to the city this evening?
Hi, my name is Kathy Stahl. I live at 225 Railroad Street. I guess, first of all, I just wanted to start out with thanking the Police Department and the Code Enforcement Officer for how quickly they gave attention to the graffiti that was in the neighborhood, the topic I spoke about during the last meeting. I know I showed about eight different pictures of graffiti surrounding the neighborhood on Dodie Island. So I'd like to say I really appreciate how quickly all of that was removed. I appreciate that that was taken seriously. I did want to just mention that there is still the one that has not been covered, and I realize this is on private property, and I know it takes time to get a hold of owners, and I believe this is an abandoned building or a vacant building. But I just wanted to mention that this is still out there. I'm almost wondering if the Code Enforcement Officer could find this, because it is hidden so far back along the railroad tracks. And this is the one that I, when I researched, I found that it did definitely represent three different gangs that did originate from the south side of Chicago. One were the Gangster Disciples. The other is the National Folk Gang Symbol, and MBK, which is another pretty notorious gang throughout the United States. So if there's any difficulty in finding this, I can pinpoint that. It is along the tracks of Garfield by about 218. If you follow the tracks down there, about 200 yards, you'll see it on the building, and they also have the footings to the Trestle Trail tagged as well. So that's part of the railroad's property. And the one across the street from where I live is still on the building of Vermicorps premises. I don't know if they had been contacted or not about removing it, and I don't know what these symbols mean or any of the other ones. I was only able to find information on those three from Chicago. But again, I guess I'd like to thank you again for taking the time and considering it a serious matter and getting those removed. I think we can all agree that it's not something that we want in our neighborhood, or something, an example that we want to set for our children, so, thank you.
Who wishes to speak this evening? Seeing no one, we'll move on to the report of Department Head Staff Consultants. You got here just in time. The first item is a report from Attorney Captain regarding the 460 Anup Street property, the former Urbanta or R. Donnelly property.
Thank you. I just wanted to provide an update with regard to where we are on the, our, our Donnelly property acquisition. As you're aware, there was a real estate purchase and sale agreement that was approved by the Common Council, the Redevelopment Authority, and it's the Redevelopment Authority that is working through this project. It was signed on May 24th. We have gone through, received the title work, the survey work, and, in fact, today I received some information from the seller. We had received the title work and the survey work, reviewed it, and then provided comments back to R. Donnelly with our objections to some of those items that were on the title and survey review. And then we just received their written response today, so I, I haven't even reviewed it to see what, if anything, they're going to be doing with regard to our objections. And then we have a number of days to review it and get back to them. We also did go and onto the property, had made arrangements to go onto the property for our general feasibility review, I think is what it was called. And we had somebody from Health Department, Fire Department, Building Inspection, had a, a number of professionals. We got together and went through the building. There was nothing that was surprising that came up. It was everything that we already knew. So we went past that time period. The, we're expecting that our, our Donnelly is in the process of, and we actually have been told this, they have been out onto the property with the professionals that they're using to put together a Phase 1, and if necessary, then the Phase 2, et cetera. And of course, they have so many days within which to do that, and if they have their own review period, and it's at that point, if they decide to give it to us, then I guess that's really the important part of the transaction, because we'll have to take a good look at that and then decide if we actually are going to purchase it or not, or are going to acquire it or not. So on the purchase and sale agreement, that's where we are. In the meantime, there was a group of developers that had indicated that they were interested in developing the property, and they provided the city with a development proposal, which I will hand out to you. Some, I understand, already received it, because this was handed out by the development group at the Redevelopment Authority meeting that was just had. And what the Redevelopment Authority did is, you know, took information. It was the first introduction by the company who told the Redevelopment Authority what their proposal was, and subsequent meetings will presumably be scheduled through the RDA. So if you're interested, you can keep a lookout for that to see what it is that the Redevelopment Authority wants to do with it. And so I will just hand these out. Again, it's, today's not really for questions. It's just a report, and I wanted to keep you in the loop about, okay, what is going on with respect to this property? One more? Is that it? Okay. So I can't answer questions with regard to the purchase and sale agreement, however. If anyone has any?
Seeing no one at this time, we'll move on to the min- Oh. There you go.
Yeah, thank you. Just a comment, not a question. With our new Community Development Director on board soon, I know, I think it's, you know, that he should tour the building, and I know myself and a couple other Aldermen would like to tour the building too, so if we could set that up, so we could all see what we're interested in, and especially the Community Development Director.
I don't know if we have the ability to.
No.
I'm not sure if we have the ability to get additional tours, but we can look into it. Community Develop- new Community Development Director was here for the RDA meeting on Wednesday night as well, so he did hear the proposal, but we can see what we can do.
I was talking about physically going through the building, that's why.
We don't technically own the building at this point.
Well, I understand that, but you, we heard the Attorney say that all these different city people went through, and now we have a new staff member. I don't know why you've got to argue with me on this, Mayor.
Because, I'll let the Attorney-
I can comment on that. There is a purchase and sale agreement that has been executed. There was a certain period of time within which the city was able to go through the building, and that is expired. So according to the purchase and sale agreement, there is no further opportunity at this time. We certainly could check with them to see if there was something available. They would ask what it is that we would be going through it for, you know, what the reason is, I would assume.
Well, I would think it's very important that the new Community Development Director see the building for a stand, and, and in the future, when we have city staff going through a property like this or something, I think the council should be notified too. I would certainly appreciate it.
We just had professional people go through who were able to provide an opinion with regard to the asbestos, the PCBs, structural stuff, so that's the purpose. There was a specific indication in the purchase and sale agreement with these sellers as to, you know, why we could go through it and who could go through it essentially. If it's something that would be interested, it, we would need to know that actually before we sign the purchase and sale agreement, rather than after. It's difficult once it's signed. But definitely, we can talk to them if there's a reason for going through, and we'd have to explain that to them. And you may recall that in my discussions with the council, with the RDA, it took a long time to get this purchase and sale agreement put together. There were some very particular standards and qualifications and stuff that the, the group that was negotiating for R. Donnelly, they didn't want everyone walking through. Certainly, there could be a danger in just anyone walking through. They wanted to see and, you know, watch who's going through and where they're going. Some of the places are low ceilings, et cetera.
Alderman Collier?
I don't know how simple it is, and I understand what you're saying about low ceilings and fall, trip hazards, everything else, but if we plan on looking at anything to do with this possible other development, if there's a chance we can go on a little field trip and go through there, I would like to do that. And as far as maybe just a lucky phone call, maybe we could set something up, because I'd be interested in going through that building, just in case we go any farther with this other development. Thank you.
Alderman Taylor?
You may not think, but we do represent the city, and we're going to have the final say on the dollar amount, so I think that's very important, that this body, if they want to be part of the professionals to go through, I think we should have that ability. And to me, this little log speech you gave was just having a foot out the aisle, trying to trip us up. All we're asking is that our new Community Development Director be able to go through this building, so he can understand it properly, and a few of us Aldermen that care would like to go through the building too, that have to make the final purchase.
Seeing no further discussion, we'll move on to the minutes and communications to receive. Do we have a motion? Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Commissioner Mayor. At this time, I make a motion to receive and put on file minutes A through E and Communications F through K.
Do we have a second?
Mayor, I had a question on J and K.
There's a motion, a second. Alderman Taylor?
I had asked that the Chief give us a little expanded, or a little presentation on going to the White House visit, and we do have a communication in here, but I think the public would like to know, and since the city paid for it, a little, tell us exactly kind of what happened, and what came out of that meeting.
Do we want to start with K?
Sure.
Because I thought, I thought you said G and K?
Yeah, I, I, yeah.
Or J and K?
Just K is fine, I just had a comment.
All right, we'll start with K. We could talk about it for a while, and I'm sure you want to move on to other things, but short version is, I was selected to participate in this due to the work that we had done with the cops office here in Manasha, bringing procedural justice training to the Police Department. We were one of a handful of agencies across the country to be awarded a grant to have that training brought up to us here, which obviously shows our commitment to procedural justice and some of the other topics which have been covered in the President's 21st Century on Policing Report, which was released last May. The get-together itself took place in the White House Office Building right next door to the White House, if you're familiar with the complex itself. It started off with a presentation by the White House's Senior Counsel, kind of discussing the, the study itself and the applicability, and this was actually before many of the things which have taken place across the country, so that's kind of put a whole different twist on it. They have since held three additional listening sessions, like the one I attended, and the President actually attended one, the last one, and I've been getting meeting minutes from the, the subsequent ones, which have been going on. After that initial briefing, which was in a room very similar to the White House Press Conference Room, it's not the same one they used for that, but it looks the same, we then broke off into a couple different groups where there were seminars then put on. One was, and they were all dealing with various aspects of that report which had been released last year. They did the implicit bias section, which I found to be the most interesting and relevant, trying to stay kind of ahead of the curve as to where law enforcement's going in the country. They also did a section on social media, which is something that we've been fairly involved in. They did a section on officer wellness and safety, and then they also did one on statistical analysis and trying to gather better information across the country on the things that various local agencies and state agencies are involved in. Hitting off the topic of the most important one, I think, is probably the implicit bias, because we all have implicit bias, everyone, including myself in this room do. And what's been interesting is I've been doing a variety of research and studying on this over the last probably six to 12 months, and we're kind of getting to that point now that we have the basis of procedural justice, training our officers on implicit bias. And implicit bias, in the very short version of it, is by us all having it, we don't want to be making decisions based upon our subconscious biases. So if I told you I drove a Subaru, you would immediately think of me as probably someone that is, enjoys nature and hugs trees or what have you. If I told you I drove a Hummer, you'd probably think that I care less about the environment and drive through, over the trees perhaps. So not knowing anything more about me, but just the vehicle that I tell you I potentially would drive, you're already making those associations. Well, the last thing that we want to do in any of our jobs, but particularly what we're finding in, in law enforcement, is we don't want to make decisions based upon those biases we have, especially when it's something that certainly isn't founded, such as race, socioeconomic status, male, female, you can have a variety of different areas and aspects. It's fine to go ahead and make decisions, but you really want to be aware of that and know what your own personal biases are. Some of the ones that I've taken, I found that I have a very, I don't have a bias when it comes to male versus female, for example. When I think of a doctor, I immediately have an image of both a male and a female in my mind. However, I do have some other ones, and it's important for me then to recognize what those are, so I don't make decisions on that. So in a nutshell, and again, I could go on for quite a while, that's, that's kind of what that brought out in the forefront, and that's what we're looking at how to steer the department to stay on probably with the best trends that have been identified by professionals across the country on.
Well, congratulations on being selected for that. That's quite an honor. On item G-
Before we go on to that one, Chief, could you explain what procedural justice is, just for people who may not know what that is as well?
Variety, again, we could go on this for-
Sure, the short version of it.
The short version is, in the dealings that we want to have with folks, and procedural justice is actually something that has its base, actually, in the hospitality industry. Really had, if you look at the, where it really came from is probably the hotel industry. There's, there's, it's really applicable in ours, because there's sometimes, no matter what we say or do, we're not going to make people happy. We're not in the customer service business. However, just because we're not in the customer service business, that doesn't mean there are uncertain things that we can do to, to leave the citizen feeling whole after we deal with them. So by doing things such as listening to them, treating them with equity, it doesn't matter if you're a millionaire, or if you're on welfare, or if you're of a different race, everyone should be treated the same, in addition to the decision-making process. We also want to have them to have a voice in the decision-making process, and then the final step is, no matter who they are and how they are, to leave them with their dignity and respect and check at the end of our contact with them. This is something that I brought probably about three, four years ago, and it's really starting to take more and more root. The one thing I did backwards is really you should be doing it internally before you do it externally. So we started it externally and did it internally, but it's worked out, and as a result, one of the tangible things that I know that has been effective of it is the number of citizen complaints that we've had over the last couple of years. It's dropped from where we averaged, anywhere from three to five a year. Last year, we had none. So we know some of what we're doing is, is taking, taking stock or, or holding true.
Alderman Taylor? Did you want to go on to the next step again?
Yeah. The only comment I had on item J was, these were some emails that were generated between the last meeting and this meeting, and I just wanted to say that we also asked Mayor you and staff and the Manasha school officials if they had any emails up to the purchase of this building. We would like to see those, and I expect those are coming.
I, I can forward you those. I thought that was just Alex that was looking, Alderman Zalinski, so I can forward them to everyone. I did give them to him at the beginning of the meeting.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
I can do that. Alderman Keenan?
Thank you. Chief, could you speak to, since they were addressed in public comments to both items G and J, and explain what your memos covered and what your findings were?
Sure. I guess we'll start alphabetically. And G for graffiti. Guess I didn't notice that before. Oh, apropos. One of the things that we want to do, we certainly like to hear from people in the community, because they're obviously the eyes and ears, and as much as Joe Paulzine or the officers drive around to try to find issues, we, we don't see the things that people in the community will see. So when we got the information from the graffiti from the last meeting, I went to Joe about it the next morning, and had found that, I believe the meeting was on the 18th, he was actually aware of the ones on the signs on the 8th, and they were taken care of by Adam Alex and his crew out at City Garage the following week. So actually, when we were sitting here in the meeting, the ones that were on those signs had already been taken care of, so the pictures were, were squared away. The ones on the building, which I believe is at Tool Forum Madison, it faces Garfield as well, but that's where the graffiti was, but the address is actually Madison Street address. Joe had been in contact with the owners that own that building, which is out of Texas, and that was around the same time as the original complaint, again, before the meeting. He had given them a compliance date as we, one of the questions that came up, I didn't put it in the memo, but this is handled as, as a general nuisance complaint, and by city code, they have five days to correct it, but just in the same way that we might give a 15-day for a person that has a headlight out. If it takes them 30 days to get the money to replace the headlight, so be it. We'd much rather see them have two headlights than a, a ticket. So Joe had been working with them, and the week after then, the meeting, they have a local office in Chicago, they got a team together, and I think the Thursday of the week of that meeting, they had come up and, and taken care of most of the problem, I believe. Joe now has a point in contact for that building should we have other issues. The other thing that was spoken about, the graffiti that was on that building, as well as the, the street sign, that, that's more of what's referred to as a tagging. It's, it's not really, it's people being goofy, stupid, whatever you would like to call it. It's not gang-related, per se. The other graffiti which is tucked away as described, Joe's also working on that one and has been trying to work on getting compliance with that. That one does show reference to a couple of the street gangs down in Chicago. However, the gangs in this area really have dwindled. They were much more prevalent in the late 90s and early 2000s, and even when we saw, you don't have Gangster Disciples, per se, like you do in the city of Chicago. Growing up outside the city of Chicago, kind of have a little bit of intuition to how this stuff works. When you have them, and when we saw them up here, they didn't even use the name Gangster Disciples. They used some of the tagging that would be done down there, but they would have their own twist to it. They'd have their own name to it. In addition, when you would see tagging in an active street gang, it would be placed in locations which would be identifiable to mark their territory. They're not going to put it in a hidden away place, because they're basically trying to put people on notice, this is ours, so to speak, stay out, especially for other street gangs that might want to be involved with it. The other thing that is indicative of when we have problems along that lines is we end up looking and we will see other types of complaints. It could be anything from possible drug houses and drug use to other sorts of damage, theft complaints, and when we looked in the area concentrated where this graffiti was found, I put in the memo, I think barking dogs or animal complaints and some ordinance violations were the biggest things. So I guess the, the purpose of this is I really wanted to draw it out, because as folks here have discussed a number of times, people do watch these, and I know that there's, there's been some people in the community that have, oh my God, Manasha's got a drug, or a gang problem as a result of this. So I didn't want it to be the proverbial, you know, yelling fire in a crowded theater or anything, and make people think that there was something more to this than what it was. So the biggest thing that we want to do is make sure we're staying on top of it as we continue to, and, you know, Joe does try his best to, to stay with it and address these as they come up.
Thank you. And then item J, if you could speak to your memo.
Yeah. Item J, I attached the, the emails just so people knew where the concerns were that were addressed to me this past week, and this has to do with expanding a bar owner's or a property's premises for a special event. And the way that the code reads is that if they request it, I have to give it, in essence, unless there's something that I can tie to it to give a denial, and if I give a denial, then I have to let the city clerk know about it. The, the concern that the, the citizen had on this is that there's no review process, there's nothing that comes before the council for these things, so what are the rules, and should the rules be changed? I follow your rule. I follow your rules. As I said, I think this is the 16th one that we've done, and they have gone to five or six different bars all across the city, and we've never had a complaint on any of those. And on this one, we did have one complaint shortly before it was over, and that was a person who was singing in a microphone that was yelling, and technically by even our ordinance, yelling into a microphone isn't a violation. Our things that deal with the microphone has to do with advertisements, and I think it comes back to the days of the 20s and 30s where you'd have people yelling down the street to try to get people to come into a business. So I guess I'm really just bringing it to your attention. If collectively the group thinks that you need to amend it, then I want you to be aware of the concern in the community. I'm not seeing a huge issue with these events, and most of these have gone to the Elks Club and the Knights of Columbus, that they account for about half of the expanded premises for the corn roasts and some of the fundraisers that they do. And like I said, we haven't had major issues with it, but I wanted to bring it to your attention in case there were concerns.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Alderman Zalinski?
My first comment was on the graffiti complaint. There's a tag behind Jefferson Park Apartments on the switchback on the signs. I let City Garage know about it like about a month and a half ago. It just hasn't been fixed yet, probably just forgotten about, just putting that out there. And then on J, with that communication, I wish you could have gave us that communication with just the ordinance and information about the ordinance instead of putting, I guess, a concerned citizen's name out there into a packet into public premises, basically hung out to dry. I had a recent issue with this. Anytime if an Alderman has a concern about ordinance issue or any neighboring, people have a concern about the issue and they call the coenforcement officer, it seems to be more often than not that that court, the court officer or someone is telling them who is complaining, and it just makes unhappy neighbors. And in Manasha, I would like to see neighbors working with each other and these code violations fixed without having to get the city involved, but it seems more often than not, it just turns into a mess rather than something getting resolved. And the issue with that where someone had a concern in the city and then they're basically, they could be potentially bullied because of the situation, people knowing that you are the one that complained and when they just had an issue, and this happens more than this just instance, and I would just like to see that change where these people aren't hung out to dry. That's my only comment on it, and thank you.
This situation, this particular party likes to use Facebook as a bully puppet, and it's starting to escalate, and there's more and more and more people being involved with this. And I think there needs to be a review of the ordinance for the length of time someone can have something. To me, eight hours on a weekend in a neighborhood, residential neighborhood is too long to have bands playing, you know, three to four hours or something, I think a neighbor can put up with that, but we only have 12 weekends in the summertime, and I happen to be sitting on my boat a couple hundred yards away, and I could hear every note, every word perfectly. And I'm not seeing anything about this situation. I'm looking at the big picture of the neighborhood bars that we have, and we have to be sensitive to the neighborhood and to the neighbors, and I think the timeframe has to be reduced a little bit at some point. The chief was correct. In the late 1990s, Appleton and the Fox Cities started getting a lot of graffiti, and along with that, I helped write the ordinance for Manasha in response to that. And one thing about graffiti, it's like an infection. It'll just keep growing and growing and growing if you don't manage it, and the sooner it's taken down, the better. We had what we called the graffiti busters, and it was a group of, with the Youth Go organization, and that group, along with Ace Hardware and Doty Island, would have pressure washers, and they would get permission, and they would go in and take care of this graffiti as soon as possible. So maybe we need to start that back up with the Youth Go organization and look into, if we could start the graffiti busters again, so to something, a little history on where this all came from. Thank you.
Alderman Collier?
Boy, I don't know if I should say nothing. First, I think Alderman Taylor is way out of line. There was a benefit to help people in that need stuff. I was there for probably five hours. Of course, I was there because, excuse me, your sister-in-law made sure she made it public when she put it out. I understand. I said I was going to get out of line a little bit. I'm sorry. Any bar that could get the permit, get everything done, and do it right, and benefit the people in the area, I'm not worried about one individual or one family. I'm sorry. It's good for the city, and it's good for everybody there. The police were there, they did their job. I didn't see no serious problems except for one person causing a nightmare again. Thank you.
Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move that we end discussion and vote on accepting the minutes.
Yep. Accepting the minutes. So we would need two votes now, Attorney Captain. So the first vote at this point is to end discussion. So do we have, could we have a roll call vote on that, please?
Motion carried on roll call seven zero.
Okay. And the next one, we don't need a roll call vote on. All those in favor of approving, accepting the minutes and communications, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Item G is the consent agenda. There are four items. The minutes to approve from the common council meeting of July 18th, the board of public works recommendations from July 18th, including the street use permit for the Otto Grunsky Runskey on August 13th, and the street use application for the Labor Day Parade on Monday, September 5th, the NINA Manasha Joint Finance and Personnel Committee recommendations from July 26th, recommending the approval of NINA Manasha Fire Rescue's 2017 cost distribution formula with the city of NINA weighted at .5929% and the city of Manasha at .4071%. Does anyone wish to have any of the items separated? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve? Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, we make a motion to approve consent agenda items one, two, three, and four.
We have a motion, a second. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call seven zero.
Item I is action items. The first item is the accounts payable and receiv, accounts payable and payroll for July 21st through 28th. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of July 21st, 2016 to July 28th, 2016, in the amount of $1,378,322.52.
There's a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Alderman Zalinski?
Is there a question about check number 54683? I don't know who would know the answer to it, but where were these flowers used? Just curiosity, and are these budgeted? It's on the 19th page. Sorry about that.
So I understand that you can't tell, but from the account numbers, I can tell that the $479 was for the marina, the $630 was for the cemetery, the $5,705 was for parks, and $78 was for the library, and yes, those were all budgeted, or they couldn't be on this list.
No, that's, okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call seven zero.
Item two is the beverage operators license applications for 2015 through 17. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve the beverage operator license applications for the 2015 through 2017 licensing period as listed under approved in the police department's memo dated July 27th, 2016.
There's a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call seven zero.
Item three is the amendment to the listing contract with Newmark Grub Pfefferly for 901 Airport Road. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve the amendment to the listing contract with Newmark Grub Pfefferly for 901 Airport Road.
We have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call seven zero.
Item four is surplus city equipment determination for a 1997 Gilcrest Pearl paver. And Mr. Alex is here this evening if anyone has questions. Do we have a motion? Alderman Benner, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, we make a motion to approve the surplus city equipment determination for the 1997 Gilcrest Pearl paver.
There's a motion, a second. Is there any discussion?
I just wanted to add that that recommends the disposing of it. I don't think, that's just a recommendation. That's, and you're right.
Director Stino, do you want to explain what this is doing?
The code says that anything of a certain value has to be approved by the council as being deemed as obsolete so that we can go ahead and get rid of it as a matter of course. So...
Okay. Because that is the ultimate outcome that we're looking for here.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
So we will be selling this paver. We won't just be disposing of it, just so that people in the public know that we're not just throwing it away. This just means that we no longer have a use for it within our personal fleet. Alderman Zalinski?
How do we sell it? Like, what do we go about? I just saw online auction, like eBay or something, or do we try Craigslist where we don't have to pay a fee?
We have tried eBay in the past and limited success. We're going to put this on Wisconsin Surplus Online, which a number of our neighboring communities use as well, so that's our intention. And there is no fee. All fees are paid by the buyers.
Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call seven zero.
Item J is held over business. We have two liquor license applications. Clerk Galiaza, do you want to update us before we move forward?
Sure. The first license is for Margaritaville. It's back again. They still have not had the chance to get all of the inspections done because there had a delay in some of their electrical work. And I talked to the agent this morning, and she said right now it's scheduled for an electrician to come in on this Thursday, and they say, she said it should be only one day. They had to move some boxes around or something, which delayed the last week. So right now, they're still waiting for the electrician. That'll be this week, and it should be a one-day process, and they should get all the inspectors in.
Did you want to go on to the second one, too?
Certainly. The one for Lake Park Swim and Fitness, they are all compliant. They, all their taxes have been paid, they're up to date and everything. So that one, they're ready to be approved because they've got everything in order.
Okay. So the first item is the liquor license application for Margaritaville. Do we have a motion? I think the recommended motion would be to postpone to the following meeting. Alderman Benner?
Does that work to postpone it at this time? As far as their timing goes? Okay, make a motion to postpone. Didn't we postpone this already? Do we need to table it?
Several times.
Can we continue to postpone it? Or do we have to table it?
At some point, we, at some point, we have to make a decision on it, but what we'd like to do is keep it on the agenda so that it doesn't get lost.
Okay.
Because we don't want this just to be floating out there someplace. So postponing would be preferred.
So my motion was to postpone it.
And was there a second?
I can't.
There was a motion, a second. Is there any discussion on the postponement? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Second item is the liquor license application for Lake Park Swim and Fit. Do we have a motion? Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, we make a motion to approve the liquor license application for Lake Park Swim and Fitness for, yeah, I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
There's a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote on that one, please?
Motion carried on roll call seven zero.
Item K is ordinances and resolutions. The first is R-2616. It's a final resolution authorizing public improvements and levying special assessments for the Woodland Hills subdivision. Do we have a motion? Alderman Benner?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion at this time to approve resolution R-2616.
There's a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call seven zero.
And item two is Resolution 2716, and that is a resolution authorizing public improvements and levying special assessments on the province terrace and O'Naitis Street properties. Do we have a motion? Alderman Benner?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve resolution R-2716.
There's a motion, a second. Is there discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call seven zero.
Item L is appointments. There are three this evening. The first is the appointment of Jill Halverson to the library board. Do we have a motion? Alderman Keegan?
Thank you. I'll move to approve the mayor's appointment of Jill Halverson to the library board for the term of 8/1/2016 to 7/1/2019.
There's a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call seven zero.
Item two and three are reappointments to the redevelopment authority. I know there's a typo on item three. It should be through 2021, not through 2016, and at your pleasure, we could take these separately or together. Alderman Nichols? Do you have your light on?
Yes, thank you.
Oh, okay. You looked at me puzzled.
Well, if there's no objection, I'll take them together. I'll, I move to reapprove them, or to approve the mayor's reappointment of Linda Kennedy and Gail Pop to the redevelopment authority for the term of September 1st, 2016 to August 31st, 2021.
There's a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item N is public comments. Any matter on the agenda? Is there anyone here who wishes to make a comment this evening?
I just wanted to thank Chief Steika for his explanation of the graffiti situation in my neighborhood. I wanted to just let him know that it's very reassuring that there's currently not a gang problem in my neighborhood. And also, you know, most of these tags I would not have known about had I not spoken to my neighbors and listened to their concerns about what these things meant. So I'm happy that the neighbors in my community feel comfortable coming to me with their concerns, even though I've only been there for a very short few weeks. So I'm also pleased to know that there are currently no issues in my neighborhood besides, you know, minor problems with barking dogs and things like that. I'm hoping that this means the bathrooms at Shepherd Park would be open to the public pretty soon. I know they were closed because of some major vandalism issues in that neighborhood in the past, so if those have all been resolved, I think that would be nice to see us go forward and have that, the bathrooms open. So again, I just want to state that it's good to be a part of a community where people feel comfortable speaking to each other and expressing their concerns and, you know, working towards getting things resolved. So thank you again.
Thank you. At this point, if we could have a motion to recess to committee? Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, we make a motion to recess to committees.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We stand up... We stand at recess. Thank you.